I listen to.
There you go.
This signature.
He must been outside listening to. Wonder what be coming today.
On that car.
Deny it?
Who do? Oh, no, we got exactly the same about two hours.
I'll be going ten. At least two hours.
Tip fifteen.
I tell you what, let's jump right in.
I'm sure you gonna be a starter.
Oh, look at there, Paul.
I gotta get out of here.
Clean slate.
Yay!
All right, we're live.
We live.
Live.
All right. Let's get started. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call, we calling our second meeting of April. I'd like to ask, uh, our emergency management to lead us in a prayer. I'd like to ask supervisor Sheila Jones, lead us in the pledge. If you will, put your phone on vibrate or turn them off. Thank you.
Let us pray. O gracious Father God, we come to you once again telling you thank you. Thank you for allowing all of us to wake up out of our bed this morning. A place, Lord, where we can get rest throughout the night. Lord, we just ask you to let all the decisions that's being made, Father God, let it be made in your name. And, Lord, we just ask you to continue to bless the leaders of this county and continue to keep them pushing forward. And at the end of the day, Lord, we give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise. Deep prayers, we pray in your darling son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute.
President. The United States of America is a true republic, a free and honest, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Rodney, you should be up.
Yes, Mr. President, you should have before you the, uh, April the fourth, twenty twenty-two board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, board, please approve said minutes.
Make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
All right, motion by Gerald Second, by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion carried. All right, we got, uh, what that, Lenice Goodlow, concerned citizen?
Yes, sir, I have not seen Ms. Goodlow this morning. Uh, I will go check outside if you want to move on to the next one.
Yeah, I see.
Bring in her next one, Phil Hammond Holman. That's him right there.
Philip.
Philip, okay.
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Philip Holloman. I am a real estate and closing attorney in Madison. I'm here on behalf of John Reese, who is a property owner, uh, here in Madison County, uh, in District Five. He owns property along a road called Shady Acres Lane. And he's retained me to, to come before you and try to cure it, an issue, uh, or a defect with his title to his property. So, Shady Acres Lane, and, and I guess let me back up. The, the defect pertains to getting utilities to the property. So, um, Shady Acres Lane is shown in the county registry as being a public road. However, it, there was discrepancy in the description of Shady Acres Lane being paved or not paved. So, I did further investigation into whether, or when, rather, the road was, um, um, made public. But all I could find was the entry in the registry. Couldn't find any, any indexing of any minutes. Um, and, and, and discussion with residents along Shady Acres Lane is that the county has never maintained or improved the road in any way. That's just what they, they allege. So, at this point, I am here before the board to simply begin a dialogue and, and hope that the board will, um, begin to implement, uh, a, a, uh, an improvement plan or a maintenance plan so that the county will, will, will have a presence, uh, on the road. Does, does anyone have any questions that I make an answer about the road itself, or?
How, how many houses on that road, you think?
Two, currently two houses on the road.
Tim. You know anything about this?
Yes, sir.
Is this road belongs to, do this road belong to the county?
This road is in the two thousand road registry. So, that is the board minutes that makes this a public road. You know, it's, as you all know, that the two thousand road registry was the one that, anything before that didn't matter. At that point, that became the official road registry. So, for some reason, this road was put into the two thousand road registry. So, it is currently a, uh, county maintained road. Now, we do not have any right of way associated with this road. We maintain it under a prescriptive easement. So, the question about utilities is, we cannot give the authority to put utilities on that because the land is not owned by us. We just maintain the road so that easement for utilities would still have to be acquired from the property owners that the road crosses.
Uh, Kenese, have you worked this road?
I talked to Lawrence.
I don't feel bad, I don't know, it's in my district, I don't know exactly where is that.
This is off Meta Hills, right?
Right, it's basically the end of Meta Hills. Meta Hills is a paved road that stops. And then Shady Acres is a very narrow little gravel road.
Gravel road.
That continues on back to some property.
How long is it?
Oh, I.
Guessing?
Half a mile at the most.
It's about sixteen or seventeen hundred feet.
Okay, quarter of a mile.
I thought we were allowed, always allowed to, uh, utility, if, if we had just a, just strip it right away, that the utility can go in the back of the ditch.
I'm gonna let our attorney to answer that question then.
Can we just get an easement from the owner? Get an easement from the.
I think that might be the problem, man.
I have been down that road and, um, presently, the owners that are along the road have not been cooperative. Uh, they wanted the landowner to agree to certain stipulations that he, and, he was unwilling to, to abide by, so. So, that's kind of led me, or progressed this issue, um, to present it before the board just so that everybody becomes aware of the situation and, and maybe we can, um, work towards, uh. Now, now, this is the first that I'm hearing about the prescriptive, that, that the county's operating under prescriptive easement and that, um, because my understanding is that the statutory language for public roads is that the utility rights accompany that's, that status, uh, that, that if the road is public, that they're, that the county has the, the right to install and maintain and operate utilities, within the right, right of way of that road.
President, I would, I would let the attorney work with.
I, I just finna say, can, can, uh, Mike, you and, uh, Tim work with him and, and, and have us, uh, answer by next meeting? And just to keep in mind, uh, uh, probably eighty-five percent of our roads are by prescription right of way.
Okay.
And we allow utilities to go in, in the ditch or the back of the ditch. That might give you some leeway.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Let me ask you the first, this is the section part you talking about? Come forward.
It's on the end of Meta Hills Drive in Section thirty-six.
Cause it's showing two rows there.
Is that, yeah, so this showing, uh, shady like acres that is too?
Well, Shady Acres, Meta Hills Drive dead end, uh, and Shady Acres Lane comes off. It actually makes a ninety-degree turn to the north and comes about two hundred feet. And then turns and goes due west. So, the map is, is, is not accurate.
Paul, is, is this in your district? Cause it looks like, I mean, it's off of North Old Canton Road down there close to me.
I don't know, I don't know where is that, so that's.
Okay, I think it's closer to me.
It's about a quarter mile south of Twelve Oak Road, if you're familiar with where Twelve Oak.
Yeah, I know where Twelve is.
Okay, just, just about a quarter mile south of that.
According to the map, it's right, he said the map is not accurate, but it's right here. This is District One. This is the, the bend in North Old Canton. So, according to the map, it's in District Five.
Wow, I didn't know you came all the way down.
You can keep on claiming it here. All right. They gonna work with you, sir. All right. Computer, come back here.
My house.
Who else forgot, Sheila?
Uh, I still did not see Ms. Goodlow. Travell Dixon, PRWS, PRV WSD Police Chief is here to speak to you.
Come on up, Chief. All right.
Morning again, uh.
Morning.
Came on behalf of PRV and we were over in the Twin Harbors District. We were told you guys had issues over off one of the neighborhoods with speeding, uh, down, uh, it's gonna be Harbor, Harbor Road, I believe that is. Went over there last week on a Wednesday and Thursday. There is a slight speeding issue between five o'clock and six o'clock. Uh, this was something that I, I sat there myself and actually visualized. So, I spoke with Mr. Sigmund and he advised it to bring this to the board as far as after you want, if you guys want to install speed bumps or, or stop signs in that area. Uh, this was just something that was given to me to check on and I wanted to bring it to the board supervisors.
Yeah, and I think there already, there's already a, at least one speed bump on that street, right?
No, ma'am.
None?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I know that I'm getting complaints about speeding back there.
Correct.
And they're speeding all the way down the street and then around to the Launch Road.
Once they're, once they're coming.
And it's vocals, is my, and it's adults.
Right, once they're coming off of North Old Canton into the neighborhood, they're, they're gunning it. And we were thinking at first, like everybody else is gonna be kids. These are actually gonna be adults and people that are coming through, living in, inside of that neighborhood. Actually set over in, um, I think it's Harbor Cove. That's, that's actually the one point, I think there is one stop sign in between there and Harbor Cove. It's right before you get to the road that leads to the launch. Uh, but that's, that's what we observed those two days between five o'clock and six o'clock. So, just wanted to bring that to the board and I don't know if you guys want to have a plan for more stop signs? If you're looking at the enforcement side of it, that will help ourselves and any deputy that might be in there? Or if you want to look at the speed bump aspect, because we don't, neither the county or ourselves have, have radar so we can't really detect the speeding aspect of that.
Much as just if you got some more streets intersection, put up the most stop.
I think that's probably the, the, the best thing to start with. And remember last week, we had the petition from them and they had, how many signatures were on that, Shelton, kinda sorta?
It came in after the fact and I don't remember the number.
It was a good many.
Fifty-eight percent of the people affected.
Yeah, so.
That's the initial criteria.
Okay, we probably oughta look at putting some speed humps or bumps. I know there's one or two in there, cause I saw one myself. But I'm, I'm surprised it's adults, it's speeding.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway.
And we, like I said, I've gone through every, each of those neighborhoods, uh, each of those streets and observe. I know there's one that's, has, uh, has some road, road work being done to it. So, that might be one, the one thing that might slow them down a little bit. But I think that is gonna be an issue probably at the beginning of each, each portion of that neighborhood over there in that subdivision.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add, Tim?
I was just gonna mention that we are following our policy for speed humps. We did get the petition in. I have looked at the street and am currently putting a plan together to present back to the neighborhood to see if this is what they want to do. So, we're, we're following our procedure, we're moving forward with it.
Thank you so much, thank you for both of you.
All right, T, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you here.
Thank you.
All right. Move right along. We'll go to a public hearing.
Motion.
On Swamp Road. Swamp Road.
Vote on it?
All in favor.
All, I guess you open the public, you all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I hope y'all vote down the way you want.
I don't think you got but two yes. I don't think you got but two yes.
Two yes.
Still have voted that.
All right, hey, Don, how you doing? All right. We gonna let you start, I don't know what side you on, Don.
I'm on the side trying to get it abandoned, but, uh.
All right.
I've got Mr. Howe and Mr. Fayard here, who are the landowners, and then Reverend Poole, who's affected, and then Joe Earl is here, Joe Earl Levin.
Yeah.
Are here. Uh, I thought Mr. Valentine might come, we had talked last week, but at any rate, uh, Mr. Howe has met with most of the landowners and then with the Reverend Poole, who are affected by the abandonment. And, uh, they have prepared a, a new road that runs on their south boundary lines, which I think everybody is pretty happy with, they gotta make some corrections to it in a couple of places, like a extra covert and, uh, but I think we're at a point where they're happy with moving the road and then abandoning Swamp Road.
Okay.
Sound good.
So, like, is anybody here opposing of what, uh, attorney Don has said? Okay.
Supervisor Griffin, may, uh, may ask, Don, where is the new road that y'all are proposing? Cause it sounds like. It runs along the south line of, uh, Mr. Howe's property and Mr. Fayard's property.
Okay.
It won't be our road.
Yeah, I think I have the. You got that map right, so. Months later, so you talking about here? This, you talking about somewhere right in there? It'll start, it starts right here at the intersection of the current Swamp Road and the south line of Mr. Howe's property and then runs due west along that north boundary line, their south boundary line. And then it gets to the northwest corner, that's, uh, Mr. Poole's northwest corner. Then it continues on across the existing trail over to the northeast corner of Buzzer Roost. And on over to the Martin property right there, so they all have access.
Oh, they all have access to it.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've added an easement to it. Give all of them.
That's okay.
All right, I entertain a motion to, is there no one else to speak? Entertainer motion to close the public here.
Second. For motion.
All in favor?
Sorry, Mr. President, could you clarify that for me?
I made that motion.
You don't care.
Say second.
Gotcha.
All right. I make a motion that we abandon all of, uh, Swamp Road that not being used, hadn't been used in forty-seven years.
Second motion.
Do we have that? Yeah, do we, Tim, do we make, uh, do we have that description correct?
I do not have, oh, our description, yes, our description is correct.
Yeah, but you understand what Paul's motion is?
To abandon that.
That area that we never maintained.
Yeah.
Which would be part of Old Highway, or.
Yeah, we just don't want it to come back up here next year.
Year.
You know, we just want to make.
I can get the legal description to add to the minutes for the day.
Okay.
We do have it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, got a motion. By myself, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank y'all.
Swamp Road settled forever.
And Don, I guess y'all getting with the other landowners to make sure that the easement is taken care of and filed. Their attorney and then I about to get, give Mr. Poole, we can get him in shape. Sound good. On behalf of the board, we definitely thank y'all for coming to this conclusion, that's for sure.
Y'all have patience.
Yes, yes. It abandoned, Joe.
That's right.
All right.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. They, they coming up there, cause the motor grader driver, uh, quit. Have you found one yet, uh, Tim?
Okay.
Yes.
Swamp, the one that be maintained. All right, concerns, no, consent item. Got a motion on it, consent item, in discussion.
Thinking about Sheila?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. I'll bid this item, Carrie Miniger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm here this morning to ask you to accept and approve the, uh, fire protection agreement, uh, between the Madison County Megasite Fire District and the City of Canton and the South Madison County Fire Protection District.
Make a motion for approval for both items, for the, uh, City of Canton and the, uh, South Madison County, uh, County Fire Protection District.
All right, the motion by Gerald Second by Trey, uh, first of all, I got, I got a secondary motion I want to offer. Where it's saying to, uh, pay Canton ten thousand dollars a year. My secondary motion is to pay him twenty thousand. And South Madison ten. Reason why, uh, Canton would be catching all the calls and back at the station prior to South Madison getting there. So, that'll be my motion to pay them twenty thousand. Direct the, uh, Megasite Board to pay them twenty thousand then ten thousand.
Second motion.
Got a motion.
Question, what do we pay him now?
Ten.
We pay everybody ten now?
Offer them both of them, offer them to pay both of them ten thousand. And Canton is right here, gonna be catching all the calls. The call gust stack gotta come from either Yanier Road or way down fifty-one in Yanier Road. Canton would be completed and back at the station.
Mr. President, if I could, um, I don't know if you.
No, no, you can't. Right now, we got a motion. And a second or a substitute motion.
Yeah, I do have a question, though, I do want to understand the contracts, though. Between the two, are, are the contracts the same as far as, uh, the obligations and the dollar amount? And if they are, why, why is it set that way?
Yes, sir, both of them are exactly the same. Uh, I, I did want to say that in the contract, that they both get ten thousand, but there is a two hundred and fifty dollar per call, um, stipulation in the contract also. Uh, and we added that, uh, after discussion with, uh, Canton Fire Chief. Uh, because it was brought to our attention, uh, that Canton would probably make more calls because medical aid calls may come into play. And so, we added the two hundred and fifty dollars per call because that way, whatever department makes more calls, of course, will get more money.
So, to kind of go on what Supervisor Griffin's, uh, substitute motion is, so something's already in play as far as pay on the, uh, on each one that makes the extra call. So, if they make an extra call or if they make a call, then they get paid.
Correct, in, in addition to the ten thousand.
Or in addition to the, to the base of ten thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, is that the reason, is that the question, then why is South Madison getting paid at all? Cause I don't see them being able to make a call to the Megasite unless it's an all-out blown fire. Then you gonna have every fire station in Madison County there.
That's true.
It, it was a, uh, fire boards wish that we had a, two departments that were on, uh, first response to the Megasite. We felt like that was, uh, important to do, uh, considering, uh, the size of the building and future development that may be coming. So, we wanted to have two departments that basically would be responding, uh, to it. And, uh, we've had a lot of discussion between the departments, between the fire chiefs and kind of worked everything out. And so, uh, this is, uh, the contract that, uh, we arrived at. But it just, basically having two departments increases the level of fire protection that we're providing to them.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, that's, uh, sounds good. But truth of the matter is, you know, Canton's gonna do all the respond. Man, it's just all to it. It's, it's nice to give South, uh, Madison some money, if y'all want to give them some money. But, uh, the responding fire department will be, uh, Canton Fire Department. They, they will be responding to everything that goes on over there. And I don't see any reason why we would not take that in consideration in terms of, of, uh, distance where the two fire departments are. And, um, knowing that, you know, Canton's already been responding, uh, over there. I think they're the only fire department that has, that has been responding to, to calls during the construction period and everything else. So, it's just, um, I think a, a, um, a, a matter of common sense when it comes down to how we structure, uh, contracts with these two. And, and keep in mind, this is temporary. The plan, I thought, was always to build a fire department. Uh, you gonna build your own. Uh, this is just a temporary situation. So, we, we've actually, you know, moving something out of the response, uh, uh, area of Canton and somewhere they won't have to respond to it any longer after a while because we're gonna build a new fire station out, our own Megasite, Megagiant Fire Station. I, I don't see anything, I, I, I agree with Paul. I think we oughta go ahead and pay Canton, uh, a little more because they do have, uh, they, they, they're gonna be incurring all of the responsibility. And two hundred and fifty thousand a run, that sounds good and I know why that was placed in there, but, you know, hey, I don't see why we would have both of them set at ten thousand dollars. That was the reason why I second the motion. And I would hope that our board would go ahead and, 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 uh, make these contracts, uh, approve these contracts with that, uh, change that was, uh, requested by our board president, okay?
Yeah, and, uh, I'm gonna just add this to it and, uh, I'm gonna just carry the vote. The city of Canton, they are being a team player. And from my inside sources, uh, South Madison Fire Department, they are being a, a team player. Cause really, they don't want this burden. So, ten thousand dollars addition to give to Canton, I don't think it's asking too much. All right, now we going with the, uh, substitute motion.
What?
Is, uh, to add.
Change the, uh, payments from ten thousand per year to the, to the Canton Fire Department, twenty thousand per year and keep the South Madison payment at ten thousand. Same contract, just amend that part of the contract.
All right, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? All right. Now, we back to the, uh, primary motion.
Mr. President, the, the reason I, I didn't support that is because I know that they've all worked together, from my understanding. And you're right, both, uh, fire districts are very good and, and they've worked together and, and, um, and with that being said, also Supervisor Banks, uh, you're right, I think this is temporarily. And I was gonna ask, actually after this, where are we on the, uh, fire station? Any update on, on that as well? But go ahead and finish this motion first, if you will, President.
All right. Uh, just to go with your work together. No, they didn't, they almost twisted and they didn't have a choice, just like, just like Carl and I right here, we lost the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion carried, three, two. All right, move right along to.
I would like to ask about the update on the fire station, just see where we are on that, because you're, you're right.
The, uh, um, Carrie Miniger and Drew and I met with Dale Architects, uh, about a week ago. Remember, we, we're taking the Gluckstat III plans, we're having to modify them a little bit for the larger truck. And we're now, we have gone through a review of the plan, made some. larger truck, and we're now, we have gone through a review of the plan, made some modifications, they brought those modifications back to us, and we're now waiting for them to do a topo survey on the land, to do a site plan, and hopefully we'll be moving ahead with advertising in 90 to 120 days. Maybe not that long.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, moving right along. Done, your own result status?
He actually has a partner and associate with the firm here to represent this.
Good morning, Board, my name is Zach Giddy.
Say that name again.
Zach Giddy.
Okay.
I'm John's associate, and I'm here on behalf of my client today to ask that this board grant a leisure and recreation district in the Lake Caroline subdivision. And we prepared a draft ordinance and submitted it to you all, laying out the, how the district will be laid out, that the maps, where we posted at all points of ingress and egress, showing the maps, showing the boundary limits, the containers will be in 16-ounce cups. I believe in the packet, there was included a, a letter from the Sheriff's Office stating that they will enforce the laws, and I'm not sure if you got it, but it was a late edition, we do have a letter from the Homeowners Association saying that they are in support of it as well.
Oh, yeah. I can make a motion that we approve.
All right, got a motion by Carl, then a second?
Second.
Second by Sheila, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, all care, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, done, thank you. Now we got our purchase clerk, Keisha, Ms. Jackson. Is Keisha outside? Well, we'll go back, come back to her, Cornelius, you up?
There she is. Good morning, Board members.
Morning.
Morning.
I bring to you the rejection dump truck chassis proposal. I have Mr. Bacon up here with me in regards to the rejection as well, but I will read to you this on your agenda. Attach our two recently opened dump truck chassis proposal. Empire Truck Sales LLC submitted an electronic proposal, and Tri-State Truck Center submitted a CO proposal. Other proposals submitted, only one vendor may require specifications advertised. I recommend that the board take the following action, acknowledge all proposals submitted.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and the second one is the rejection of the Empire Truck Sales LLC proposal for not meeting the specifications on the following. The front axle spring size are under the required pounds requested, and the overall chassis height is, is too low to the ground. Here I will pause and let our road manager, Mr. Bacon, give you description on those.
Okay, on the Empire, the description on that, dealing with the leaf spring, I'm gonna need all the, the heavy springs I can, because this truck gonna be pulling and grabbing all the time, and plus pulling the excavator, plus pulling the power hold patch, which loaded with tar and a nanogallon tank. And on the height, I'm gonna need their standard height, because lower, we're all the weight on it, that's gonna be too low for that truck to be pulling, in case of roads that we gotta go get gravel roads, that, that get trees out, that gonna be pulling minis, minis, excavator, and that we're gonna need that height, and, and that's my reason why.
All right, they're motion.
That motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I would ask that Cornelius would put something in writing for the minutes on his explanation of, of why, just a short paragraph, and we'd include that into the minutes as well, if, if the-
All right.
-motion would allow.
All right, Cornelius, he will get that back to us.
Well, he can just add it to the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put it into the minutes, if, if the motion will allow it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And I also ask that the board authorize setting of a reverse auction for the vendor that meets specs for this Tuesday, April 19, 2022.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cornelius, I see you got summer hires on here, and last year, we had to make some calls, get you some prisoners, you got prisoners lined up for the summertime?
Well, that's, that's my reason why I'm here, to tell y'all about, I, I request for some more prisoners, they hadn't gave until August, they must be show handing up there, and this paper is getting ridiculous, seem like they're turning the mouse count to Atlanta field all over again, and so I'm-
We got plenty of prisoners.
Yeah, but they ain't turning in Manuzil.
We'll work on that.
I'll set reverse auction.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Got a motion by Gerald, I second it. Discussion.
Wait, what's, what's the motion?
Yeah, what's the motion?
To approve.
Hiring? How, how many?
Eight.
Eight? How many prisoners you think you need? Many as you can get?
Many as I can get, I requested for them a couple weeks ago, but they, they hadn't gave me nothing yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks.
I got a couple spots, they need to go get their papers, so you get in board. All right, Tim.
Good morning.
Morning.
First item, item 49, which is the Catherine Lake Platte, we'd like to remove that, we'll present that at a later date.
I got it at 50.
Okay, well, I must have an older version, but yes, it's, it's that, that item. So the first item I have is the final acceptance of Stump Ridge Bro, Bridge Project. This is state A project that we did, it was completed in January, and this is just-
Took three years to do? Yeah.
It did take a while, and, but it does look good.
Yeah.
And, uh-
See how long it lasts?
Hopefully it lasts a lot.
The time it took to put it up.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, motion approved. Motion by Seth, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right. In previous board minutes, the board voted to pay the MPO, or the local match portion of paving Kearney Park Road for the City of Flora, and at this time, we're asking the board to authorize using Fund 306-300-3953 of the FY 2020 Road Project II fund to pay for this portion.
Move.
Take it.
Got a motion by Carl, second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, Tim, how's the striping on, I know it's gotta dry out, but you get the-
It is advertising this week.
All right.
And also, just to, we got an email this morning, I think everybody got the email about Livingston Vernon, that's also in the same advertisement, in the same project.
I got one quick question for you. You know, Gluckstat's three lanes coming into Bozeman, if you're going east?
Right.
I know next year, the year after, we're gonna be doing intersection improvements, but could you take, there's a left turn, a short left turn, and nobody turns left in the morning, is there any way you can do a, a straight and a left turn, so people, because in the morning, going, trying to go Gluckstat interstate, it backs up?
We can, but we'd have to reconfigure the signal, it would, we'd have to trade out signal heads, we'd have to do some modifications in the controller, it's, it's a little more to it than just swapping out the arrow on the, on the lanes, but it could be done.
All right, could you give me an estimate?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Do it.
Scott?
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
All right, how you doing?
I have two items, first item is Dawn Street, this is an extension on a mining operation on the northwest corner of Highway 43 and Goodlow Road. Property is on day one, is in Supervisor District Five. They are trying to wrap this project up, and I think asking for about an eight-month extension to finish this mining permit up.
Is this the one we gave, or two months extension on, not too long ago?
No, sir.
In that, all right, long as it's existing, mine pity, I make the motion.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I, next item I have is Martinique, Part Five, this seven-locked South Carolina Boulevard, property's on the planned unit development, and is in Supervisor District Two.
Motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Carl, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It does say Carolina Boulevard right there.
That's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Attorney at law. He's present today.
I'm present today, in full voice. Good morning, Board, I've got a, a brief matter. A month ago, the board will remember Ms. Nancy Sanchez came before you, and she was extremely concerned that her, her property, her residence, had gone to a tax sale, and she thought it was incorrectly done by the board, by the county, because she had paid those taxes, you asked me to look into it. We looked into it, I consulted with the Chancellor Clerk, and I've talked to Ms. Sanchez ad nauseam, and we've concluded that the tax sale should be voided, it was erroneous, because she had paid those taxes. There was an issue of an increase from the base amount that she'd been used to paying, and it was our clerical error that she did, where she wasn't notified of the increase. So you have a letter before you from the Chancellor Clerk, they, they agree with me that we should void that tax sale and let her pay that little increase. So we should void the tax sale on this parcel, I recommend that that tax sale be voided, and the letter recommended is before you from the Chancellor.
Motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, that's all, Mr. Lawyer, leading right on into Account Administration, Shelton Vance.
Mr. President, Supervisors, I draw your attention to item number 55 on the agenda. It is identified as routine maintenance of municipal roads, of municipal roads and bridges with the City of Gluckstat. You may remember at the last meeting, we discussed this, and I told you I would bring back a fully executed copy for you to acknowledge. I have a fully executed copy for you to acknowledge of the road and bridge maintenance agreement. In addition, the debris collection agreement that you approved last meeting also is, has been presented fully executed, so I'm presenting both agreements, the road and maintenance and debris collection, for your acknowledgement.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Trey, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
You may see on your agenda is the next item, a request from Trustmark National Bank as the trustee for the Parkway South Public Improvement District requesting $724,400 in shortfall payments under the contribution agreement. Once this letter was received, back on April 6th, we sent a request to Trustmark because we have a question about the amount of the contribution that's required. Trustmark is requesting, the trustee is requesting $720,000, $724,400. We believe that amount should be $415,400. We have been waiting on a response from them, your attorney has spoken to their attorney, but as of now, we have not reconciled the difference, so-
Big difference.
Yes, sir, the, the difference comes in that there have been $309,000 in collections from the PID this calendar year since the last payment was made on the bond, and we think that that $309,000 should be applied toward the upcoming debt service payment. And some, the trustee obviously disagrees with us, but has not explained the disagreement. We will not have another board meeting before the payment is due, unless you schedule a special meeting.
Mr. President, it's Mike, and you expound any on that with your discussion.
Also, the administrator said it all, we have the letter from the trustee of the $700,000, it's a standard letter, and it's based on the contribution agreement with Parkway South, you know, which basically says that we agreed to advance whatever the deficiency in the PID payment would be expected to be. That's $700,000, and then that's two years, and if, you know, well, they have to reimburse us within two years, if they don't, we don't pay again. So that amount is $700,000, but we've collected $300,000 that should be applied to the 700, which makes us owe about 400. So I, I, I agree that you should, you should unilaterally credit it to yourself.
Yeah.
I have no more information, I spoke to the, I didn't speak to the trustee who wrote the letter, I spoke to the Trustmark lawyer, and I don't have an answer. She, she, she didn't reply to that question, so I don't have anything else to say about that.
Yeah, that, that was basically what I was asking, discussing between you two.
We spoke, and she'll look into it, and by this being, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Mr. President, I would, I would like to ask Shelton, the administrator, how many more years we like on this?
I think the bonds pay off in 2026.
Man, and this is the second year, is this, have they paid us for?
They are, they are current in their two-year repayments, and in exchange for this check, there will be a payment being made to us.
For amount of-
And I think the amount is in excess of half a million dollars, but I did not bring that information with me today. I can get that information, I just don't have it in front of me today.
And so what I'm hearing, Mr. President, what I'm hearing is for, for us to, to make the payment of $309,400 to Trustmark?
$400.
I mean, is it $400, $415,000?
The 309, the 309 is what has been collected from landowners. Now, I do, I do want to say one thing, I did not know that the, no, sir, I don't need to say that right now.
They may object to it, but, but they, the money was collected.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to pay Trustmark $415,400 for this PID payment.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, and, and when you do that, you're gonna send them your calculations of the, what was collected that they already have, so they'll understand that, that, that they are receiving total sub hundred.
Yes, sir, we sent that to them on April 6th, but we will, we will send that again. We also sent them the, the information from the collector's office showing where the money had been collected and remitted to the PID.
And I believe we have done this in the past one time as well, seem like we have. But anyway, that's my motion, Mr. President.
Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next item is a fire contract with the City of Flora. You may recall that, I don't know, about three meetings ago, you presented a, or we presented a contract for you to approve with the City of Flora. Flora has returned that contract with a slight change. They indicate that they will provide services, and they've inserted "when manpower and equipment is available." So if you accept those changes, I need you to agree to accept those changes and reapprove this contract, and then if you approve the contract, authorize payment of the amounts under the contract.
That is on the Fire Department?
Yes, sir, City of Flora Fire Department.
Oh, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Gerald, any other discussion?
I apologize, I should have said town of Flora, not city.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next item is a letter from the Gluckstat Police Department for surplus vehicles. I would ask that you acknowledge this letter, and then direct your attorney and I to work with them on their request.
Motion.
Take it.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is selection of engineers for a CDBG grant. You may remember that we are, you have authorized applying for a CDBG, CDBG funds- associated with sewer rehab in the West Madison Utility District. Three, uh, engineering companies submitted a proposal, Wagner Engineering, Mendrop, and Pickering. These proposals were reviewed last week by the selection committee you named at the last meeting. And at this time, we would like to, uh, ask that you select Wagner Engineering for this project.
Move. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Gerald, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
In conjunction with that, to begin immediate work, we would ask that you authorize Wagner to begin work for a fee not to exceed $100,000 on this project.
Move. Motion by Carl.
Second.
By Gerald, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
The next item is approve a moving services agreement for, uh, the extension service, MSU Extension Service, from their current location at the Wind Job Center to a new location on Highway forty-three South.
Motion.
Motion by Gerald.
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Next, uh, state, um, Attorney General Lynn Fitch has submitted to you a letter related to the opioid settlement. This is acknowledging the fully signed MOU for the opioid settlement.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Sheila, uh, in other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
And, uh, the raise grant application, I would like to you, for you to acknowledge the documents that are associated with this item on your agenda where the, where it acknowledges that the raise grant documents were submitted, uh, with the due date last Thursday. And I also have an additional document to give to the clerk where it shows that Department of Transportation has received the grant application that we filed.
Make a motion for approval with that additional, that, uh, sheet that Shelton had.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Gerald, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Thank you.
Counselor? Oh, yeah. Uh, Just a quick question.
Ray got a question then.
Mike, going back to these surplus vehicles, what's the easiest and most cost-effective way to get them some vehicles? Uh, for the fire department, for the fire and rescue? Thank you.
All right, uh, time for our cup troil, Ms. Sun.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have for you is number sixty-three, and that is the approval of the budget amendments and the inter-fund cash transfers.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Carl, second by Gerald, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
The next items, sixty-four and sixty-five, is gonna be the approval of the claims docket and one payroll docket.
Move. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Now, go ahead.
Number sixty-six is the approval of the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Move. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
All right.
Gerald, take over.
Okay, next.
And number sixty-seven is the approval of the planning and zoning commission for their per diem.
They'll have a motion. Motion by Ms. Banks, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, all opposed. Okay.
All right.
Mr. Lot?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Vice President?
Mr. Tucker?
Hi, Sheriff. Good morning, have three quick items. I, I neglected to put a personnel action form on the, uh, or to provide it in time to be on the docket today. I have that here with me, and I ask for you to approve that because the work being generated by that employee will begin prior to the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Uh, it's for Tommy Jones. If I could provide that to you, clerk, get your approval for that.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Uh, also like to, uh, renew our contract with the Madison County School District to provide, uh, school resource officers for the district, uh, that is a reimbursable, uh, accounting through the county. Those officers work in, uh, all of our public schools within the county. There's, that is a contract that, uh, Shelton worked out, or we all worked out actually, with the, uh, the school district, wherein they, they reimburse the county for those employees.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
And lastly, wanted to bring you up to date, uh, on the Madison County amusement park. Uh, Mr. Espy and, uh, Shelton, uh, Mr. Griffin and myself met with the attorney representing the owner and operators of the amusement park, uh, up in northeast Madison County. They were represented by Mr. Ross, Ms. Lisa Ross. Uh, had, had a productive meeting, somewhat, uh, we, uh, agreed, uh, on some stipulations. They agreed to halt the, uh, the big concerts in the time being. I think we have sent them some requests that we would like to see put in place, uh, moving forward as far as having events and notifying the Sheriff's Department what hours of operations we'd like to see and, and security measures put in place. Mr. Espy has forwarded those to Ms. Ross, I think we're waiting on a response from them, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Espy? So, uh, I know they had an event.
The Griffin had some, some, some changes.
Yeah. I think we added some, I, I think there were some holiday, I think you added holidays in there that, uh, you wanted, uh, them not to operate on, and I'm good with that. Yeah. Absolutely, one hundred percent. Uh, I know they had an event, uh, last weekend, a, just a, a horse race, uh, no, no four-wheelers, no concert. We didn't have any issues there, so hopefully if we can confine them to those single type events where they don't have horses and four-wheelers and concerts, and just a single type event, we'll be able to, to, to have some success with that. So that's kind of where we are on that, we're waiting on a response from them, uh, and I'll update you when we get that further.
Great, great, uh, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
I guess you're down to old business. No old business, new business. And, okay.
Mr. President, I've gotten a text that I misquoted an amount. The Wagner Engineering is not to exceed $150,000 rather than $100,000, so if you could consider that change?
I would, uh, make a change in my motion to a hundred and fifty.
Make a change in my second.
All in favor of that change?
Aye.
Mr. Lot, you get that number?
Uh, yes, sir, but I'm sure I'll get Mr. Vance on that.
Thank you.
Several months ago, uh, you may recall receiving a request from Circuit Court regarding putting state equipment on our computer network. I have an amendment to that request to allow an additional state-owned printer to be added to our computer network.
Make a motion for approval.
By Gerald, second by, uh, Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. All right, still on new business, any other new business? Uh, in the executive session? All right, Carl, you gonna be here for the whole executive?
I got fifteen more minutes, man.
Before, before we go into the executive session, just a question, uh, on our next meeting. We were looking to go, probably go to Washington next week. Are we looking to try to choose a vendor before then and have this board approve it?
You talking about a broadband?
Yes, yes. So we will have to kind of not adjourn, recess, just a thought, uh, unless you got?
Is that what you want to do? Uh, Fri- Thursday, no, Friday, while we were off for Good Friday, I received an update from one of the vendors and had received an update, uh, just a day or so ago from a, of one of the other vendors. I'm expecting responses back from them either Tuesday or Wednesday of this week to the questions that we had.
So we should have the information by Friday?
I'm, I'm hoping to have, I'm hoping to have the information by Friday.
And just for the information, we've had three, uh, reviews of top three, uh, his, uh, vendors.
Yeah.
And, uh, they all went very well, very well, so, uh, we're just waiting to get back some information from two of the vendors. And that's what Shelton just referred to.
So, so we have all that information early Friday, uh, the committee maybe can come together later that Friday, and maybe we recess this meeting until that Monday?
I thought you were leaving for, for DC on Monday.
Are we leaving on Monday?
We are on Monday.
We could meet Monday morning about two thirty, three o'clock.
Uh, meet on the airplane. Meet on the airplane.
Let's think a little bit about this, but we're going.
While we're going to the executive session, yeah, all right. We finna go?
Close determination?
Motion to determination, and we'll be going into a what? Litigation.
Litigation.
And only litigation?
Litigation, just litigation.
Motion for close determination?
Motion to close determination.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Gerald, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Yeah, move that we go into.
The executive session?